We will now open up the September 2 Corcoran Planning Commission to order. And we'll go through the roll call. Commissioner Jacobs here. Commissioner Wu.
Here.
Commissioner Lanterman.
Here.
Commissioner Shulak.
Here.
Commissioner Verancamp.
Here.
The record show everybody is in attendance. Those that would like, please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thanks again, everybody, for being here, and those online, welcome. Item three, we'll go through the agenda approval. Has anybody got any questions or changes? Brad or other commissioners?
None from staff?
All right, I'll take a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved, Verancamp.
Second, Lanterman.
All right, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Agenda is approved. Thank you. Item four, open forum.
And Chair members, this is for items not on the agenda. If anyone in the audience would like to do open forum, or else those that are virtual, you could use the raise hand function virtually right now for items not on the agenda. Nothing as of now, so I think we can move on.
All right, very good. Item five, the minutes from the August 5 meeting. Planning Commission meeting. I reviewed them, I don't have any suggestions or corrections, anybody else?
Nope.
Fairly states the record. Or the meeting, okay. I have a motion to approve the minutes.
So moved, Verancamp.
Second, Lanterman.
All right, all those in favor of approving the August 5 minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, minutes are approved. Okay, item six, new business. 6A, final plat and final PU development plan for Tavera 2nd Edition. And Kendra has the staff report?
And just prior to that, Mr. Chair, we do have a public comment opportunity for this item. The next item is a public hearing, so we'll do that. So anyone either in the audience, or virtually, who would like to comment on this item, the final plat and the final PU development plan for Tavera 2nd Edition, please use the raised hand function now. And we do have one. All right, caller ending in 8753, you can go ahead and unmute. Oh, and I apologize, we're not hearing you.
Good evening.
There you are.
Can you hear me?
Yep, we can, Greg. Go ahead, and just, we do have the five minutes time period as well.
Good evening, my name is Greg Hogan, I'm at 19220 Hackmore Road. I wanted to speak this evening on the zoning amendment discussion that you're going to have tonight.
Oh, Greg, sorry, that's actually a public hearing after this one. This is regarding the Tavera item.
Oh, so related to the agenda, it says six, public comment opportunity, and then you're going to have a public comment opportunity after that, is that correct?
We'll hold a public hearing. As I mentioned, the public comment opportunity is for item 6A of Tavera, and then we'll have a public hearing for the next item.
That's not the way the agenda reads, but...
Excuse me, it's very clear, so if we can just do Tavera, excuse me, Mr. Chair.
And who's talking there?
Commissioner Verancamp, thank you.
Okay, so I need to wait, is that correct?
Yeah, Greg, this is Commissioner Jacobs. So there are two items under new business. There's 6A, which is Tavera. And then there's 6B, which is the public hearing for the zoning amendment for assembly uses, which you are referencing. So at the moment, we are right now discussing item 6A.
6A.
And while that is not a public hearing, and I don't understand necessarily completely the public comment opportunity, how that differentiates a public hearing, but we will, once we're done with the Tavera, then we'll open up the public hearing for the amendment for assembly uses, and then you are more than welcome to address that issue at that time, if that's okay. Not to make you wait personally, but...
Well, it is very confusing tonight, so... I will, I'm not going to be able to comment later, so very confusing, and I'll let you guys go. Okay, thank you.
All right, Mr. Chair, so just for those who are watching, and I mean, this is something we've typically had for a long, long time here, with the Planning Commission and this council. So, public hearings are required by law to have public hearings. The public comment opportunity is completely bonus. The council, for a while now, has wanted as much public comment as possible, so they allow comment on everything, whereas they're legally only required to at formal public hearings. So, all of those items on Planning Commission and council are completely above and beyond any requirement for public comment, so it's all bonus. And it's been that way for, since the pandemic, essentially. So with that, we have no one else on this item, so Kendra, if you would want to go ahead and present.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Brad, this is the final plat and final PU development plan for Tavera 2nd Edition. And this is for 46 single-family home lots and five outlots, some of which are holding zones for future development, but most of which are permanent outlots. Phase 2 is just south of Phase 1. It is a replat of Outlet B, Tavera, and the former Tice property. Some of you are familiar with. The background on this, again, is that the preliminary plat and PU were approved in June of 2020. Phase 1 was reviewed and approved in April of 2021. And there was a PU amendment approved by the council on July 22 to reflect some changes to the wetland delineation, and also allow the development sign to remain up longer than 30 days. So this image generally shows the location of the 2nd Edition, and that excerpt piece there, that exception piece, is the Tice property that I was referring to. And then the 2nd Edition is part of the former McCowen property, which is being platted today. So, on the screen is the 2nd Edition plat. To the north, you can barely see, because it's faded back, it's part of Phase 1, but the Horseshoe extension. So this is south of that, and it's an extension of Tamarack Lane, which will be built with the 1st Edition, will extend further south. And then the Loop Road will continue through to serve this phase. So the 2nd Edition is, again, in this area, right here. I can't, I forget, I don't have a pointer that I'm sharing, sorry. But the plans are generally consistent with the preliminary approvals. A couple of minor issues. The transmission line easement is continuing to show on your preliminary, or on your plan drawings. That easement was released, according to documents that were submitted by Lennar, so I think it's simply an oversight. It runs through Lot 12, if you notice that. Lot 12, Block 1, shows that it's within a transmission easement line. There's no actual transmission line there, so first of all, the easement was incorrectly recorded. Second of all, the easement has been released. So they need to clean that up, so that's a condition in the staff report. Second, there are some revisions that were required as part of the preliminary plat approval that start to come into play with the 2nd Edition. And specifically, the trail in Outlet A, which is that outlot on the west side of the property. You can kind of see that blue circle, it tees into the, what's the city park trail? Mid-block, mid-block of a future street. And so what we required is that that trail swing to the right and connect up with Tamarack and Horseshoe, so that we have a crossing at a street intersection, and then it'll loop back through the park. And then there, outside of Phase 2, there are some conflicts between sidewalks and trails, where they're, you're on a sidewalk, and then it switches to a trail and then a sidewalk. So we required that the sidewalk be moved to the east side of Tamarack. And we are working with the developer and the engineer to, the city engineer, excuse me, to resolve that and make that modification. So that sidewalk location will move to the east side of Tamarack, as was required. Park dedication for the 2nd Edition will be a combination of land and cash. So the developer will, once they relocate that trail, they'll provide the net land area for the off-road trail in Outlet A, and they'll get credit for that. And then the remainder of the park dedication due for these 46 lots will be cash and blue of land. So we can't calculate the exact number until we get the park trail realigned, but we'll work through that prior to release of the final plat.
Could I ask a question? Or do I need to wait until you're done?
Please.
I see that the header in this slide reads, "The final plans are generally consistent with the preliminary approvals." I think the code states that the standard is substantial conformance with the approved PU. I just want to make sure that we're using the right language here and the right consistency. Is this in, is it generally consistent? Or is it in substantial conformance, which I think is a higher, a higher threshold?
I tend to try to speak in, I always say, if I want to use words that my mom will understand, but I would say this is substantially in conformance with the preliminary approvals. These are the two items that are really worth noting, and we are working through that. So I would say they are substantially in conformance.
Okay, thank you.
This was not in the packet, but I wanted to, I did ask Lennar to provide this updated phasing plan. I noted in the packet that Phase 2 was slightly different than the original line for Phase 2. So this exhibit shows the purple Phase 1, and then the blue Phase 2. It's only showing the lots, not the common areas. The next phase that we actually expect to get an application in for is Phase 3, which is the townhome portion in the southeast corner of the site. And then they'll move north of Horseshoe for 4, 5, 6, 7, and 8, and then come back to part of 5 in that final southwest corner. As a heads up to the Planning Commission, I do expect to see the final plat and plan for the 3rd Edition yet this fall. I would expect that on your November meeting, according to the developer's plan. So with that, we do find that it is in substantial conformance with the preliminary approvals, and we do recommend approval of the final PU development plan, subject to the conditions in the draft resolution. The representative from Lennar is on virtually this evening, and, Mr. Chair, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. All right, Commission discussion and recommendation. Would anybody like to lead off?
I'll lead off.
Go ahead, sir.
So, prior to being appointed to this commission, I took serious issue with the PU standard, both generally and as it relates to the Tavera development. I voiced the same concerns here as a commissioner. I do not want to rehash things that have already been approved. For this reason, I would only like to reiterate that I think the PU standard in this city is incredibly vague, and basically gives plenary authority to develop at will. I do not think that the way it was applied to the Tavera development was in the best interest of this city. So, understanding that city code specifically Section 1040.140/6D states that, quote, "The Planning Commission shall review the application to ensure that the proposed final PU development plan is in substantial conformance with the approved preliminary PU development plan." I have just a couple of questions for staff. Having read the staff report and hearing the presentation from staff, I just want to make sure that I am clear. For the 2nd Edition, or Phase, of the Tavera development, if you were to hold the preliminary plat and this second additional final plat up to the light, are there differences? I guess part of what I am asking is, the staff report notes that there are 46, quote, "new homes." So I'm asking, are there 46 homes on the preliminary plat that are in the 2nd Edition as well? It seems to me that the law is clear. We're bound by the preliminary plat that was approved last year, and I intend to follow that law as long as we're clear on the language. So, if I could get an answer, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Yes, so the 46 lots, just meaning it's 46 additional lots. It's actually, if you held it up to the light, the 2nd Edition has one fewer lot than the, one less lot than the preliminary plat approval, where that landscaped island is on the plans, which is lots... Lots 7 and 8, Block 4. Used to be three lot, that was three lots on the preliminary plat, and because of the preliminary plat being approved before the wetland delineation and mitigation plans were approved, as a result of that, they lost one lot there. As part of the PU amendment that the council approved over the summer, they did recapture those, that lot in a future Phase 8 section, in addition to two other lots where wetlands were impacted. So, it looks slightly different than the preliminary plat. It is one fewer lot in Phase 2 than the preliminary plat approved.
Okay. All right, thank you.
As a note, would it maybe be beneficial to the Planning Commission and for Mark's point, that maybe there be just a general list or summary of the differences between a subsequent or a final plat versus the preliminary? Just majors? As included in the staff report?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I generally try to do that with the PU amendment summary, but I can be more detailed.
Yeah, okay. All right, thanks. Anybody go next? I'll be glad to go, if that's all right. So, on page 5, or Sheet 5.04 of 30, it's the wetland. I just had a question about Wetland G and the Wetland Buffer. So, the Wetland Buffer average required, looks like it kind of goes all the way across the street. How is, what is the logic here relative to the Wetland setback, being that it's going to be basically right along Tamarack, or Tamarack Lane?
Mr. Chair, this is an exhibit prepared by the applicant, which may look different than staff would prepare it. So they've just drawn that line regardless of wetland impacts. But the impact to that buffer has been approved as part of the wetland mitigation plan. So you wouldn't really need to see that wetland average line that you're seeing, because while that's true, that would be the wetland average, it wouldn't be true in light of the approved wetland buffer impacts approved by the watershed. So, that does not apply. You can see that the Wetland Buffer, there is a small buffer area up against the edge of the street.
Mm-hmm, yep, okay. So that's sufficient enough of a setback?
And so the buffer setback is the dashed red line. So they've averaged throughout the site, which they're allowed to do. It gets up, it gets quite hard to read unless you're on the screen zooming in, in my opinion, so...
I'm already challenged that way. Okay, I'd like to go to Sheet L1 of 1, the landscape plan. And Kendra, if you could, I noticed in the staff report there was a recommendation to go from a black spruce, or to a black spruce from a white. Consider Black Hill Spruce as an alternative to White Pine, and I'm not, you know... But I see here that, in looking at the trees, as they are lined up on these lots, we seem to have different sides of the street, all uniformly planted, say, one breed or one species of tree versus the other. Just from an aesthetic standpoint, is this, is this preferred versus, say, mixing them all up, up and down each street?
We, our landscape architects generally prefer to have a street, each block, block to have a street tree, so that you get more of a uniform canopy, which is what they've designed. We do not have at the City of Corcoran either a list of acceptable or preferred trees, or a specific type of tree for our streetscape. Some cities do, we do not. So this is a very common and method that's preferred by a lot of landscape architects. Not unusual to see, but it's not required by our code or prohibited by our code.
So if the developer and their landscape company, can they, are they going to follow this verbatim? Or will they just say, you know what, we're going to flip these two trees?
Well, they will, because when they don't, and we come do the inspections, they fail.
Okay.
So we do occasionally have residents who say, but I don't like that kind of tree. I always dreamed of a red oak in my front yard. And that is not what the plan says, and we have not yet approved a change to a plan to modify that streetscape. Again, because the intent is to provide a canopy similar to what, I'm sure you're all familiar with, this, in the central cities, you'll have an oak block, or we used to have elm block. So they do have to follow this, or come back to the city for a PU amendment.
Mm-hmm, okay. Okay, lot dimensions and setbacks. So, I was looking here then at the resolution. So on Page 2 of the resolution, you have the grid. And, you know, I was looking through this, and I know I talked with Natalie about it briefly, and, you know, just wanting to make sure that we don't run into situations where people can't put a deck or a porch on the back of their yard. So, in the, in the section under rear, it says here that the setback is 30 feet and 20 feet for decks and patios. Now, if we go to, if we go to Page 5 of the resolution, under H, it says that Section 1050.010 requires a 15-foot structure setback, but allows patios and decks to encroach a maximum of 6 feet into the required setback, or structure setback. And I know that that was the issue that we addressed in Ravinia with that, that, that couple that had the issue. But I'm curious about the 15-foot structure setback.
It's a table, Mr. Chair. So H should actually be corrected tonight. Section 1050.010, I just want to stop because I want to make sure we're talking about the same thing, is the wetland section. So what it actually should say is it requires a 15-foot wetland buffer structure setback, but allows patios and decks. So that's what that section, that's different from the table, from lot lines. So my apologies, we should modify that language as part of any approving resolution.
Okay. Now, okay, so then getting back then to the rear setback, then, under 14, on Page 2. Are we, because as I looked at, at some of the setbacks on these sheets, I couldn't quite decipher where there was any room to build it. But I'm only looking at the pad. And, you know, again, what we're, the piece we're missing is, how big is that pad relative to how big is the house that that subdivision's going to be selling? And what is the length of that? But in this, it says that before they can get a permit, these are all going to be looked at before the building permit is issued. And that was part of, that was part of the resolution. So is that like the building inspector that does that?
Mr. Chair, it is the developer's responsibility to sell homes to people that fit on the lot. There are hundreds of home plans, and we can't, we ask for a building pad site to make sure that, that there are pads that will fit on the lots. And so I'm confident that there are. When the Chrominga variance went to the council, there was a lot of discussion about how that permit got issued. And, you know, staff believes we identified very clearly on the survey where the setback lines were. And, you know, we could, different opinions about how big an allowed deck should be. But in light of that, Lennar had presented to the council how they are managing that process to ensure they're very clearly sharing with their buyers options for homes that allow decks that fit on the site. So between Lennar's new policy to work with potential buyers, and the city's continued review to make sure that setbacks are met for what we're being asked for permits for, I think it's unlikely that we'll have a repeat of that situation. But again, buyers have a responsibility to do their homework, as does Lennar, in their sales pitch.
I couldn't agree more.
So I think there's enough options, that every lot has multiple options that will fit.
Okay, good, thank you. In the resolution then, Page 4, under Item G, just above 19, so it'd be 18G. Stormwater maintenance agreement must be executed, is that with the HOA?
The stormwater maintenance agreement is initially executed with Lennar, and has a, Commissioner Lanterman will remember the word, but a transfer thing, where it will ultimately transfer to the HOA. It's initially between the city and the, and the developer, Lennar, but it transfers to the HOA over time.
So in this development, very much like Ravinia, the HOA is responsible for maintaining all of the... Okay. 19DII, a 4-inch LP trim on all windows, on all elevations. This, again, brought up a question that I had relative to that one homeowner Ravinia, and I never went back to confirm it, but it says 4-inch LP trim. Would this be wood? Because I, I could have swore I saw metal 4-inch trim around a window. So I just want to confirm, what are, what is 4-inch LP trim? What kind of material are we talking about there?
LP is a cement, yeah, a cement board, or engineered fiber board kind of thing. It's not, it's not wooden, it's not metal.
Okay.
And this was a proposal by Lennar that was approved by, I think both you recommended for approval and council ultimately approved as a way to address that. So it's not, should not be metal moving forward.
That's all I had at this point. Thank you very much, Kendra.
I have a, I can go next. I have a question about 14, the table, there's some small text there. Discusses homes on specific lots that are required to meet the 30-foot rear yard setback for structures, including patios and decks. And I'm looking... And I'm looking on the site plans and looking at the lots and trying to kind of figure out why 501 is excluded, included in there, and I was just trying to understand the logic. 375 looks like it should be, but I'm probably missing something here, 374, 375.
Yeah.
Are you talking about the footnote down here?
Yeah, the footnote. And then when you look at the site plans and you look at the setback lines, I was just trying to get, understand it.
Yeah, so none of those are in the second edition, but they are generally on the north side of the seventh, over here on the eighth. Whoops, I'm sorry. Doing it again.
Looks like they're in the fifth, there's the ones that are in the fifth and eighth and seventh.
Yep, yep.
Sorry, so these questions are not about what we have in front of us tonight, actually?
No.
No, but I, I do remember though, that discussion. And didn't we specifically call out those lots to ensure that, that people then weren't building decks, you know, right next to other people's property lines or that close?
Yeah, so as a reminder, right now, our code requires decks to meet structure setbacks, which in this case would be a 30-foot rear yard setback. And as part of this application, Lennar asked for approval to allow decks and patios to have a 20-foot setback instead of the standard 30-foot setback. And the planning commission recommended and the council approved that with the caveat that in those lots where, where it abuts or touches existing residential lot lines, they had to comply with the 30-foot setback. So that's where those, we couldn't get our pointer to work, but those are the, the north and the phase eight and the phase five where it touches.
Okay, I just don't see why 501's in there. But we can talk about that when we get to phase seven.
Yeah, that was approved with the preliminary plat. And I don't remember the specifics of the discussion, but.
Okay, that's fine. It's not about this phase, I can bring it up at the right time. And then I just wanted to ask again, this is not specifically about this phase, but you mentioned that the city doesn't have an approved tree list. And I'm just wondering, is it because we've never addressed it, or it's been something that has been a conscious move not to do? Do you know?
We have discussed it at various times during my tenure, but it's never been a priority in light of other things.
I took a note of it. It's something Alec, I can work with the Parks and Trails Commission to potentially have them discuss and bring it back to this commission to discuss as well. I think it's something probably worthy of at least talking about.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yeah. I think, I don't think there's a city I've worked in that hasn't had a list of trees that they've wanted to, they certainly have a list of trees they don't want to see planted, if that's sure.
Yeah, you see either or, sometimes both. And I think it was two mayors ago, last time we talked about it, so it's been a while.
And I do believe when this went through Parks and Trails, they did comment, and I thought they even struck a couple potential trees. I'll have to go back to the minutes on from Parks and Trails, whether they did that or not.
So it's been on their radar?
Well, the.
Maybe, yeah.
I could be wrong. I'll bring it back to them again.
Okay.
I made a note of it as well.
Right, you know, as a, as a note, personal feelings on it, I'd like to see a greater variety, you know. They, they make disease-resistant elms now. You know, we, we tear down elk, you know, oak trees by the acres, but yet, when is anybody planting, planting any oaks? You know? I think a lot of the trees are, you know, partly a cost and a size and, and whatnot, but I'd certainly like, would like to see opening to more, or maybe a requirement for greater diversity of trees in our areas. And, and I understand that maybe, you know, in the front yard might be a little bit more difficult, but, you know, if we've got 50 feet of right-of-way to landscape and, you know, maybe there, you know, there's more room where there's not as much traffic and people aren't running mores over it and stuff, and, you know, maybe there's more opportunity to put a diversity in there.
Yeah. I don't have any other questions, thank you.
Okay. How about you two guys down there? Anything?
All up to you.
All right. My, my major concern is more of one of, that's kind of heading toward the future with this development, and that is the amount of traffic that would empty out onto 116 and Hackamore. Recently, did I hear that, that something is moving on Hackamore Road as far as renovations and upgrades?
Yes, Chair members, the cities of Corcoran and Medina are working towards joint, joint projects. We have plans at 75 percent, and really we're talking about cost allocation. Lennar and their developers' agreement actually has a significant contribution towards improvements along Hackamore. So talking turn lanes and improvements along Hackamore from the south exit entrance over to 116, turn lanes at 116 as well. So I, it's well over a million dollars of offsite transportation improvements that they have to pay for. Related to this.
Is that really an improvement? Isn't that just accommodating their home buyers? Is that really an improvement enjoyed by the citizens here?
I would say absolutely. Anyone who would drive on those roads.
Hackamore's in terrible shape. Absolutely terrible.
So are they, are they just adding turn lanes, or are they repaving the road, redoing the road, widening the road?
Yeah, along Hackamore, west of 116, it's a substantial improvement, including, I believe it has, would actually have a shoulder that doesn't exist anymore today. And then turn lanes on 116 don't exist today whatsoever, so those would be usable by everyone.
That are turning into their neighborhoods?
Beyond that, so.
Well, who else would use those turn lanes?
Well, if anyone wants to go east or west on Hackamore from 116.
You're backed up when someone turns.
Okay. Okay, thank you. So and, and as far as County Road 116, so eventually this entire, most of this development, three-quarters of it would exit the development on Horseshoe Trail onto 116?
I'd have to go back to the transportation feasibility study, I don't have that information handy on me.
Well, and, and this is not to be decided tonight, but I'm just looking ahead at the possibility of around 270 homes north of Horseshoe and 75 addresses south of Horseshoe that would probably use Horseshoe Trail to exit onto 116. With 116 rush hour traffic already being what it is, backed up almost to the city center, getting out to go to work from 7:15 to 8:15 or something, it's going to be a mess.
We, we do have an escrow fund for a semi forest stoplight at that location.
Okay.
Yeah, okay.
So then, then there would be a, a stoplight at Hackamore, and then also just north of it on Horseshoe?
We have to receive the county approval for that, but our position is significant, in fact, because our real position is either give us a stoplight or county build an underpass for pedestrian traffic, one of the two. It'd be much more affordable for them to let the developer pay for a stoplight versus them accommodating pedestrian traffic, because the investment that's going on Gleason Fields on the other side of Ravinia, but people are going to want to get to that location and head east. So we believe they're, they will allow a, a stoplight. It's not guaranteed, but I think we'll fight for that one.
All right.
I, I kind of already thought that that was part of Ravinia, the agreement to put a stoplight in.
With county approval.
Oh, with county approval.
Yeah, so we're still actually fighting, not fighting. We're working with the county to get a light also at Gleason Parkway and 101.
Yeah.
Okay.
That would be it for me.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, thank you. You guys have beat it up pretty well. Thank you very much. I, I want to second the comments you made about the back porches, decks, those kind of things. I do not want something like that coming in front of us again, as far as variances and stuff, as long as the people know. I've talked with, had a great time at, at Corcoran Country Days. I think there was, Lennar was there, and they had all kinds of questions about things. And they, they were very explicit about what you share with your homeowners and stuff moving into your neighborhoods. So thank you guys for that. I trust that's happening. But again, we're gonna, they're gonna, they're gonna, it's gonna happen, it's gonna, there's gonna be somebody that misses. The backyards along Elm Street, that's all small, I'm going to say acreage lots and those kind of things. I don't see neighbors from that neighborhood on the west side of the center of this property and stuff. Has there been issues or anything? Have we cut down, or has there been more trees cut down than should have been? Is, is everything going good for those folks? It's just a general question.
To my knowledge, they have been. I got some calls early, I spoke to a lot of these folks during the preliminary approval process and got a couple of calls from the neighbor behind lot four, when the tree protection fence went up. But I have not heard from our engineering inspectors that there's been any issues.
Everything's going well with that? Cool, thank you, Kendra. I'm going to jump into, the council had a significant conversation last week about signage and those kind of things. When I drive 101 along Ravinia and such, I still see a significant number of signs over and above our ordinance. When will that be resolved? And then for this whole development, not just additions, this whole development will be allowed two signs? Is that right? I just, I, when we, when, when the council talked, it was two signs per development. I'd really like to stick to that. I'm, I'm not a fan of signage. I'm not a fan of the flags. I'm not a fan of the, hey, attention, kind of look type deal. Obviously, I want the safety sign and then one sign, but this is a big parcel. Is it one sign for this whole area? One advertising sign and then one safety sign, or is it multiple? Is it clear on that? And then again, I want to go back and clean up the rest of the signs, and we've got one of the developers here, as far as Lennar, and I think there's still a ton of signs left up in the Ravinia neighborhood, unless there's a permit for them. How's that?
Right, so just to be clear, Mr. Commissioner, we got direction from the council, and so you will be able to, as a council member, vote on the new ordinance, because it's going to the council on September 23rd to adopt the new ordinance, which would allow two 32-square foot temporary signs.
Okay, I was confused.
But, but that was the two, just two, a maximum of two, not more than 32 square feet each, up until, I believe it's 90 percent.
It was 90 percent completion. Okay.
And so when we initially raised the issue, we got direction from the council, we sent letters to all of the developers.
Okay.
Saying you're in violation. We believe the council will act on a potential ordinance amendment on September 23rd, and then I think we gave them 10 days after that to come into compliance.
All right, thank you. And then I know the excavation, the, the tree removal, all of the things that have been happening have, it, it looks nice. It would really be nice, while we don't have an ordinance for trees or preservation and those kind of things, it would really be nice if some of the larger trees could be left. It, it looks like that's what's going on, but whenever we've dealt with people or developers in this city, and in my previous experience, it's been a lot easier to clear cut and put in houses and go from there. I've witnessed the canopies build from where I was, and they look beautiful now, but it sure would be nice if we could save some of those so-called, in my mind, big dog trees. I, I just, it would really be neat, so again, thank you. I believe that's all I've got. It's nice to hear about the, the signage, or excuse me, the traffic controls, those kind of things. It's great to hear about Hackamore possibly getting a really good facelift and stuff. And I hope that the city in Medina and the city, the city of Corcoran and the city of Medina can really take care of Hackamore from even 116 over to 101 too. So all serious concerns of me, and I know the rest of the planning commission too. So thank you, that's all I've got right now.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Veronkamp. Okay, is there any other further discussion or questions? All right, has everybody had a chance to look at the resolution? Does anybody have any suggested changes to it?
And Will, that said 19H will make the update for the 15-foot wetland buffer structure setback.
Oh, yes, thank you, Brad. Yeah. So to, to correct or to amend item 19H. All right, well, if nobody has any other changes or recommendations, would anybody like to make the motion to approve the final planned unit development for Taveras second addition?
I'll make that motion. Shulak?
I'll second it, Will.
All right, all those in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Abstaining.
Okay, so. Okay, very good, thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to item 6B. This is a public hearing for zoning amendment for assembly uses.
Chair members, if it's okay, it would be best for Kendra actually to walk through her presentation materials and then let those who want to speak afterwards, we're all on the same page, if that makes sense?
I would agree 100% with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This, I will do my best for the record. This is Natalie's report, and she and I met yesterday and walked through it, and so I'm going to walk through her presentation. And I think between Brad and I, we'll be able to answer any questions. This is a request to recommend, for the planning commission to hold a public hearing and recommend one of two potential approaches to regulate assembly uses and other conditional uses in the residential zoning district. And most specifically, it will impact educational facilities and places of worship, both of which are defined as places of assembly in a general way. Our code definition of an assembly use was in the packet. It's very specific to religious facilities, although it's the definition of places of worship, assembly, it's really only defining places of worship. So we do recommend some changes to that as part of a code update, regardless of which option the planning commission recommends and the council ultimately adopts. In general, assembly uses are broader than churches and places of worship. They are assembly uses, but it also includes movie theaters, schools, Eagles Club, the Legion, event centers, recreational facilities. So it's a pretty broad category of uses, and that becomes important when we're talking about churches, the religious, places of worship, the Religious Land Use and Institutionalized Persons Act, which we call RALUPA for short, requires places of worship to be treated similar to other institutional and assembly uses. So for example, if you allow a movie theater, you have to allow a church or a mosque. So the city must base regulations on religious uses on a compelling government interest, and it must be the least restrictive means to advance said interest. And that's important language from the law that she's highlighted there. The city's government interest in removing or regulated places of worship stems from a desire to protect the surrounding residential community, I think the, any potential residential home specifically, from a development that could substantially alter the neighborhood character. And so the city must seek to accomplish that goal with. without preventing or substantially burdening potential religious institutions or uses within the city. So, the council has offered up two options, and staff has evaluated them in this, in the staff report, and I'll walk through the two options. Option one removes most conditional uses in low and medium-density residential uses, because the uses are really limited to assembly uses. So, it would remove places of worship and educational facilities from RSF 1, 2, 3, and RMF 1 districts. And it would remove state-licensed residential facilities serving seven to 16 people from RSF 1, 2, and 3 districts. And it would add educational facilities as a conditional use permit to the light industrial and general mixed-use district, and would add places of worship as a conditional use in the light industrial. So, this graphic was in your staff report. Sometimes it's helpful to see that red is what we're taking away and the, or, or adding in those districts. So, a strike through red is being deleted, and a plain red X is being added. Staff is expanding the proposal from the council to add places of worship within the general mixed-use district, because we do allow K-12 education facilities in that district. And the general mixed-use district is generally up on County Road 30, between 101 and 116. So, when you're evaluating this really significant change in, in where these types of facilities can go, you need to evaluate the availability of vacant land that could be potentially used for places of worship. You have to make sure that there's a place for them to go. You couldn't say that it can go in the public institutional district and not have public institutional land available. So, we analyzed vacant acreage for places of worship based on the existing zoning map, which is largely urban reserve. And so, that has, between the rural residential and the urban residential districts where it would be allowed, you can see that breakdown, I believe this was also in the staff report. And we've got about 4,500 acres of available land for these types of uses. When you take out the pieces in the musa, but add in the other areas where you would allow it, the industrial, it increases slightly to about 4,800 acres with the, both the GMU, general mixed-use, and the light industrial. And the yellow and, are the residential districts where it could be, and the red is just a simplification on, on the image of commercial districts where they could be, commercial or industrial. The, as I said, most of the land in the city urban area is zoned urban reserve as a holding zone, but most of that is planned as low-density residential, which would get municipal services post, between now and 2040, but outside of that initial phase of sewer and water extension. So, if you take those low-density areas and, and show them on the zoning map, even though they're zoned urban reserve today, show how they would ultimately be zoned, that's additional vacant land that could be used for places of worship based on the existing zoning ordinance and the 2040 count plan. So, those hashed areas are areas that could be places of worship today under the current ordinance. And this is the change under option one, showing future areas that could be developed under option one. In total, under the existing ordinance, places of worship have about 6,200 acres of land available for development. If you, under the existing ordinance, under option one, that reduces to about 5,100 acres, an estimated loss of about 1,100 acres for places of worship to locate in Corcoran between now and 2040. If you're gonna look at this option, you have to look at tax base. You can't have this conversation without that. This does have an impact to the city's tax base by taking churches out of low-density residential districts and putting them in industrial and commercial land, which has a higher tax rate. It does take that land away from being developed as in a commercial or industrial use, which could offset some of the residential tax burden. But it also pushes land out into the rural area and potentially loses farmland, which we've identified as a priority of preserving. The other item that we didn't talk a lot about yet is this state-licensed facilities for seven to six, seven to 16 persons. We currently allow them as a conditional use in all of our residential districts. We don't have any, but we've allowed them. State law requires them to be allowed in multifamily districts, either as a permitted or a conditional use permit, but does not require cities to allow them in the low density. And so, Natalie notes, however, that the RSF 3 district does allow two-family homes, which could be considered multifamily, and recommends that it remain a conditional use in the RSF 3 district should you proceed with option one. Option one was relatively simple from a policy standpoint. Option two basically continues to allow these types of facilities where we allow them today, but adopts additional performance standards. The council provided some items for consideration, and Natalie took a look at those and worked with the city attorney and developed a draft ordinance, which is in your packet, which, in summary, as a part of the conditional use, requires a 200-foot setback for these types of uses from all property lines for all structures, parking space, drive-aisles, and loading areas. We have a 100-foot setback along arterial and collector roadways, what we call major roadways, and so essentially, we doubled that setback for these types of uses. We kept the maximum building height at 35 feet, established a maximum impervious surface coverage of 50%. We don't have impervious surface coverages in our residential districts outside of the shoreline district. So, that's something new that's being added. And then, within that 100-foot setback, requiring that area to be landscaped when it's abutting a residential area. The performance standards would also require parking to be screened to a height of three feet. That's a standard now, that's not new. There is a new standard proposed to require more internal landscape islands to break up what might feel like a big mass of parking when you think about driving into a church or school. And then add a requirement that site access must be directly from a major roadway. Or another option, from a major minor collector roadway, more than, no more than 1,000 feet from an intersection with a major roadway. Which I think by major roadway, she means arterial road. Additionally, performance standards would limit when loudspeakers or exterior bells would be allowed to ring. And as always, the city, when reviewing a CUP, has discretion to attach additional conditions as may be deemed necessary to protect the residential character of the neighborhood. These standards were based on a survey of a number of cities within the state of Minnesota and other states. RALUPA is a national regulation, and so we felt like going outside of Minnesota in this case was warranted. Performance standards, as proposed, are consistent with how other similar uses are treated elsewhere in the zoning ordinance. For example, when we adopted the event center standards that, I know Jim's familiar with, we did have limits on when noise could take place, when you could have outside amplification. And so, we've adopted that here as well, that same standard. So, most of these aren't new standards, but they're standards that were specifically applying to these conditional uses. In summary, it's staff's recommendation to proceed with option two to meet the city's goals to protect adjacent residential homes without creating a substantial burden on religious institutions, and while avoiding unintended consequences that could result by removing assembly uses from residential zoning districts and adding them into commercial and industrial districts. This is a public hearing, so our recommendation is that you open the public hearing and take comments, and then close the public hearing. And then, in order to be efficient tonight, we recommend that the commission discuss the preferred option, option one or option two. And only then, when you've decided on a preferred option, then provide feedback on the specifics of that option. So, we did not, we gave you two different options, remove uses from resident, urban residential in option one, or allow, continue to allow as it is today with additional performance standards, and that's option two. So, again, happy to try to answer questions, Mr. Chair, but it is a public hearing.
Okay, just, I just have one quick question, Kendra. The slide said 200 feet as a suggested performance standards, but the report here, the suggested performance standards for setbacks says 100 feet. Is from front, side, rear? Am I misunderstanding something here?
Which page are you on in the report?
I'm seven, page seven.
I can probably help that. So, so, page seven and on was actually my draft of, of the performance standards. And some of it was tweaked in terms of numbers, obviously, but also in terms of kinda philosophy behind some of the setbacks, where I had a tiered setback, starting at 100 feet, which was kinda the number I used just to start somewhere, and based on building size, going up X number of feet per X number of feet, uh, square feet of building. And that was kind of changed in the staff version to a general 200-foot setback for everything regardless of the building.
Then plus-tiered.
Right.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
The staff recommendation is the red text, that was a little confusing, the red text on page five of the staff report. Is her recommended, recommended link.
And, and if the commission would like to go down the road of performance standards, I think that'd be a good discussion point. The council wasn't, did talk about escalating that up, the standard versus starting at 200, maybe starting with a lower number and getting bigger with the usage. So, if we wanna head to performance standards, we can certainly talk about that.
Okay, well, I, I certainly agree with the recommendation that we collectively as a group kinda make some sort of choice on, or, option one, option two, before we, you know, get into the weeds and all this. So, we can deal with that issue in a bit, but at this point, let us open up the.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask, and again, it, it's coming to us as option one and two are our choices, would it be inappropriate to add option three, that we don't change the ordinance whatsoever? Or that's not an option? We are going with the revamped ordinance and stuff off of these two options? I don't wanna complicate it anymore, but is, is that a third option? Or we are to take direction from the council mayor on, we're gonna go one of these two directions?
I mean, we have two councilmembers right here, I guess. My sense is they would want, whatever you feel as a commission is the best approach, that they would take under their consideration, but ultimately, they're the policymakers to get the votes. But I'll let them speak, I guess, too, if it's okay, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Their initiatives.
I would say, yeah, if that's, if that's anyone's position, definitely articulate that. And I don't know if, I guess, would maybe that be included in a no vote on?
Yeah, that's what I'm asking, yeah. I, I expect a lot more participation. There may be thousands of people online, but we, the, the, I hear crickets in here, but I just, I, it, and again, I'm in the transition, and I'm 200 and some pages in the 331 that are, are part of the council packet that I'm reading and such. So, if, if the direction is, we want to make the changes of council and the mayor that's current, and we wanna choose from these two options, or is there a third option? I'm just asking that.
Yeah, I think you, Kend, we'd like whatever feedback you guys have.
Okay.
Whether it's these two options, specifically what they are, modifications to those options.
Yeah.
Like Brad mentioned, you know, potentially looking at some of the other language or mixing and matching, or if you're not in favor of any of it, that.
Again, I was just preparing for a whole lot more, and like I said, there may be a bunch online. And then, Mr. Chair, just real quick, before we get started in opening a public hearing, I would really like to hear how people feel about the options and stuff. I, I have a tendency to stop listening to people and personal attacks from previous current council members and mayors. I, I truly dislike that. As I've said in the past, we are all volunteers on this. We are all citizens of this, this neat little city. And I think we all want and mean for this city to continue to be a great place to live. And I just, I want people to understand that, again, the personal attacks that I've seen and witnessed over, over my 14 years and stuff, just, it's not worth that. It doesn't get anywhere, and those conversations can be held off, offline and such, instead of using this as that sounding board, is my opinion. And again, we live in a free country, whatever is wanted to say. But I really turn off when people start talking with, with those kind of agendas and stuff. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, yes, Commissioner Lentman.
I, excuse me, I have two questions for staff. First, I believe I heard that staff prepared the report with the assistance of the city attorney. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yes, okay. Do we have a written, a, a written opinion from the city attorney?
No, we have verbal guidance from previous council meetings, and then just verbal conversations with staff.
Okay, I'm, I, I am concerned about that since we are discussing religious and constitutionally guaranteed rights. I, I personally would have liked to have seen that opinion. But that being said, is it the city attorney's opinion that both options would pass strict scrutiny? And as Kendra mentioned in her slide, by strict scrutiny, I mean that, that this law must be written to serve a compelling government interest using narrowly tailored means?
I think that the conversations with the city attorney have been still pretty high-level without looking at, at the specifics. I think last fall, he did give an opinion that the performance standards made sense to approach. We didn't have option one last fall, however. So, he, I have not heard him specifically say anything on either option, because they're still in a draft form, but that they were at this high level appropriate to continue the conversation about.
Well, I, I guess what I would say is I'm concerned by that, since we are talking about constitutionality and people's religious freedoms, and we don't have an opinion on one of the main options before us. So, I, I'm a little concerned by that, and I, I, I don't even know at this point if it's appropriate to even vote on this, but I do have a second question. I saw the slides, I saw that staff conducted an analysis of land that's currently available in residential districts for developing assembly places. And, you know, I, I get, I get the concern, but my question is this. Couldn't any vacant land in the subject residential loan simply be rezoned prior to any development? I don't see why this would place any excessive burden on religious uses, because it would be applied to all places of assembly, and it would also advance the city of, or, the interest of the city to keep residential districts residential.
Yeah, I think the only change or difference would be, if it had to be changed to light industrial, for example, from residential, that takes a supermajority of the city council, so it's a higher burden to change something to that. But if the commission would wanna go down that route. This is where we brought it to the commission at this point, with what direction to have, but we can have much. We don't have much more detailed discussion on your recommendation prior to going to council. But I think it would be a good thing to ask the city attorney regarding if requiring it to go through a super majority does create a burden that's substantial, I don't know.
Yeah, I think in the fall, his opinion was requiring them to get a rezoning in and of itself was a substantial burden.
And I believe that was the case in Rogers, I think. It was Rogers?
I think it was Rogers.
Rogers, where they, the city was actually going through the process of rezoning for a church to be there, but because they had to go through that extra step and process, they lost a lawsuit, I believe, because that was an extra step.
And that was in Rogers?
I believe that. I'll follow up with you on that, I believe it was in Rogers.
All right. If you, if you find that, that decision, or at least the site, I'd like to get that, please. Thank you.
I know we do have at least one person here for the public hearing, if you wanted to work on that, too.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing, and to our in-house visitor, and to anybody online, please state your full name and address for the record.
My name is Jonathan Coots. I live at 19398 Pine Lane here in Corcoran. So in regards to the conditional use permits, as you know, I'm in Ravinia based off of that address. And I'm really of the simple opinion that they should be removed from low-density housing We all kind of know what has happened over the last year with that. And it really just seems that there are, I think it's what, 5,200 acres of potential use where schools or places of worship could be built. And that's not really placing a burden on any house of, you know, house of religion or school or any other places of assembly. And this is really going to allow our city to maintain our rural feel. That's why I moved out here. I lived in the heart of Plinna, and I moved out here for really what we have here, which I've not been able to get anywhere else, especially when I was looking for a place to move to. If you do insist, though, that the current conditional use format is appropriate, the mayor's sliding scale of requirements, I think, makes a lot more sense than blanket requirements that do not really fit with all potential conditional uses. The best example here is, again, the southeast corner of Corcoran, and it would have been a building effectively the size of a Walmart that would have gone up in my backyard. So 100-foot setback, a 200-foot setback, really wasn't going to do much for me to look at a parking lot in the back of an industrial building out in my backyard. You know, I think, you know, one of you have mentioned some of the personal attacks that happen in meetings like this. You know, insults are thrown out, and it's not really productive. And it feels like those people have the majority of the attention, and their position is considered with the most credibility. And for me, it's very strange, because those people talk about, well, their rights to their property, they're, you know, respecting what they can do with their rights, but why are their rights superseding mine? Why are they superseding my neighbors? Why does that person get priority? Why are they entitled? When did entitlement become the thing that wins the day over everybody else in the community? And so for me, and I think we all know that it's probably just a few squeaky wheels, those people should not be driving the decisions for this commission or for the city council for that matter. It should be the collective community that's driving our decisions. And I feel as probably one of the more vocal folks in our community, that I do represent probably a collective majority of us that feel the same way, you know? We want to know our neighbors, we want to live in the neighborhood, we don't want to be next to a parking lot, we don't want to be next to a freeway of traffic multiple times a day or multiple times a weekend. So with that, I would really just ask that, you know, this commission and the city council and our city representatives just take into account our position on this matter, that we want the rural feel of Corcoran. We want to live in inviting neighborhoods, and we really just don't want giant, huge buildings in our backyard for us and our families. That's all I have. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, sir. Sir, what was your name again?
Jonathan Coots.
Thank you.
Chair and members, we do have one virtually thus far. For those who are joining us via Zoom, use the raise hand function. And first up would be Sarah Nichols, if you want to go ahead and unmute.
Hello, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Sarah Nichols, and I live at 6334 Steeplechase Lane. And I just, I want to thank you all for meeting on this tonight, and just want to remind everyone of a year ago, and what the summer held for Corcoran, and how 1,000 people signed a petition against a large structure being put in a residential neighborhood. I don't work for the city of Corcoran, but I can imagine that Brad and Kendra spent countless hours handling that petition and handling all of the things that were associated with that building, as well as the rest of the city staff. And that that system that's in place today isn't working, and it's broken, and it needs to be fixed. And, and the old council even met last fall in a work session to talk about that, before the new council that was elected even met. And, and so this has been an ongoing issue, and that it shows that this, the system of not having appropriate setbacks and controls for large places of assembly, it, it needs to be adjusted. And then I also want to remind the planning commission of the July 2 meeting last year, and remember that it ended at 2:00 AM because of the amount of public outcry. And that's all I have. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
And next we have Catherine Drivas. Do you want to go ahead and unmute?
Catherine Drivas, 6747 Old Sturridge Drive in Corcoran. In looking at the two options, first of all, I listen, I've been listening now for over a year, participating some. I think the current system where assembly, places of assembly need to go through the conditional use permit, well, I think that's okay. I don't think it's good for somebody to work, a group to work so hard and then have it denied at the last minute. So I think, in looking at the two options as presented, option two is much more favorable because people know that the, have a better idea of what the baseline requirements are. So I look at this and say, option two is really good, in this sense. Now, for, against option one, I would hate to see this opportunity for places of assembly just totally thrown out of certain areas, because these places of assembly need to be either in the metropolitan sewer and water district area, or are very close to it, so that they're some of the first ones in. Because I know that building these large buildings just out in the middle of nowhere requires a lot of infrastructure to make them affordable. I also want to say, I know the person, the first person that spoke, spoke about traffic. And while I've been out here 34 years now, and I live off of 116, and I know that when the full development goes in across the road from us, my chances of turning left to go south on 116 are going to be probably low. I will probably be going right and looping around in order to not have to sit for five or 10 minutes to get out onto 116. Because some days already it's like that, and I only see it getting worse. So I wanted to bring that up. I also think that the people who have their investment in land, who are within this area that will be affected, need to have the right to fully exercise that. And, and developments going in should have an equal footing with the people who are, who have been here and who have land and invested in land. And if they can work with the developer to meet the requirements in option two, I think that those are, are fine standards to be met. I also want to say, I grew up in a small Wisconsin town next to the post office parking lot. My bedroom overlooked it, and over a period of time, I mean, we were blocking five or 10 feet from the edge of the post office parking lot. And over time, you just, you know, you kind of get used to that, to the noise that comes very early in the morning, it's a great alarm clock, but it's not terrible. And I think churches and schools right in the heart or adjacent to, to residential areas bring so much more to communities, especially churches, mosques, things like that, because they bring in groups of people that are not, not necessarily community members, but broaden the, the community itself. So that's just it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Chair, that is all with the hands raised. There is one other person virtually who has not spoken at this point, so we'll give just a second. I will say, obviously Greg Hoagman was on the call. He has voiced his opinion to council, of course. And Tim Bozer was on briefly as well, and he spoke at an open forum to council with his thoughts as well at some point. So those are the only other two who have been on the call the entire evening thus far. So with that, I think there's no other hands raised, so you're free to close the public hearing.
Okay.
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chair.
I'll second it, Will.
All right. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye. Aye? Opposed? Public hearing is now closed. Before we begin the commission discussion and recommendation, I just want to make sure, I've got it clear in my head here, the process of, of this particular issue. So let's assume, for instance, that we make a recommendation to the city council that we prefer option two, just hypothetically. There are some standards that have been proposed here. I can't refer to a page number, the, one, two, three, four. So this is page five. So page five and six. And they are in red. If we make that recommendation, this then goes to the council, but will this take the form, I mean, before these are implemented, will it have to come back to the planning commission for another public hearing for a change in the zoning ordinance?
It would not.
Okay. So, so this is, so everything we're going to recommend hypothetically under option two is then what will go to the city council for their approval, which would then become, that would become part of our...
Right. That's why we think it's important that you choose an option, and then if there are things you want to talk about, about your preferred option, that you do that this evening. The council could say, you know what, we want to make some changes, and we choose to send it back to the planning commission, but they wouldn't be required to. This would be your recommendation to them, and then it would be formatted in traditional ordinance form for the council to act on it.
Okay. You know, and this is just my own personal comment, as I read this, I understand all sides of this, but it is kind of a big deal. And some of these performance standards are, in my opinion, something that is hard for us to fathom, as to their applicability. And I came to the one distinct conclusion, that implementation of, say, option two with a series of performance standards, and tell me if you guys agree with me, is going to lead to a whole bunch of variances, and probably an onslaught of continued PUDs so that developers... Because what you're talking about is if a church comes in and says, well, we want to build a church of a certain size, you know, we have a piece of land that we purchased that we're looking at, but it won't fit the size of church. And the only way, there's only two things that are going to happen. Either they're going to have to ask for forgiveness of the standards, and there are quite a few, I'm sure they'd go for as many as they, they needed, or they're going to reduce the size of their church, but that would seem to be against maybe what they're trying to accomplish. And so I don't know if I take the fact that, well, we can talk about, you know, 50% here, 35 feet there, 200 feet there, and it's going to just be uniformly accepted, but I'll take comfort in knowing that it's not going to fit everybody, it will probably fit nobody, and that everybody's going to seek a variance or some sort of a change in one way or the other. And does everybody kind of, I mean, is there a consensus on that, or... Because what I, I don't know if we're prepared to do here tonight is to go through each and every one of these performance standards and give a good, qualified, educated guess as to, you know, not less than 350 square feet of land should be devoted to internal landscaping islands. I don't know.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
My, well, I respect what everybody said this evening. I'm, I'm still in the motion or in the mindset that we had a monstrosity of a building going on a piece of property that didn't fit. And the way I read our current ordinances and stuff, an appropriate size, and an appropriate sized parking lot and those kind of things would have assisted or would have helped those property owners that own that property put in a nice amenity to our city, in my mind. But they asked for so much outside our normal ordinances and stuff, it created a huge issue related to the people that live in Ravinia and such. And I've had conversations and such, and I've spoken my piece and such. I don't think there's one person in that Ravinia community is going to want to send their kid to school in an industrial park. I just, I'm sorry. I grew up in a small town. I had elementary schools in the middle of the town, in the middle of the neighborhood, kids could walk to school, those kind of things. That's a, that's, that's just something unheard of now. Everything, everyone's bust and such. And I just, I don't want to handcuff us as planning commissioners, council members, mayors and such to do things. And, and I don't want to push back on the people in Ravinia, but all of the people that moved to the edge of Maple Grove and the people that lived in Corcoran prior to Ravinia coming and now Ravinia, there's a lot of people that didn't want it, period. We moved to Corcoran to live in a rural community. We are growing. I saw this in a previous city, growing from 24,000 people when I moved there to the excess of 54,000 when I moved 20 years later. And I just, yes, we are rural, and I would love to keep us rural, but the people that moved in Ravinia, I didn't want here, because it knew what was going to happen when they came in. And I'm only speaking my heart and my, my feeling right now. We need to grow responsibly. We need to honor and help our city continue to be a great place to be. We need to honor and respect each other. We need to honor and respect the property owners of Ravinia that was there, the ones that are there now, the people bordering that. But it started. It leapfrogged. It leapfrogged, I feel, a couple of parcels. And now those are filling in, and Plymouth and Maple Grove are completing. And it's coming our way. We either do something that stops it or changes our direction from small house lots or townhomes and turn them into two- to five-acre parcels like I see when I drive through the cities of Long Lake or Orno or Medina or those kind of things. I don't think there's enough money out there that's going to support that kind of development. But again, we've got to be responsible. We've got to be right. While I respect all of the people that have moved into town here, and I absolutely respect that thousand people that signed that petition, I understand that. But we've got to grow responsibly. We've got to, in my mind, city is first. In my mind, we've got to do it right for all residents of the city. We've got to help and assist. I don't think there's a lot of people out there that have invested in property. I think it's people that have lived on these parcels for a long time. And developers have come in and said, I'm going to give you this. They say, no. I think the developers come back and say, okay, I'm going to bump it to this. And I know farmers that say, there's no way in heck I'm going to take any money for this. And then the developers come in and say, I'm going to give you this. And the farmer says, you know something, that's enough. They hit my number, I'm gone. Well, then we've got the snowball of the developers. Oh, my gosh, I'm paying this much for this property. I need to go to the council, planning commission of the city, and ask for conditional use permits, plan unit developments and those kind of things because I've got to jam in a number of homes on these properties. So it just, it's a snowball-type deal. I think us as planning commissioners, we can recommend to the council and try to stop the snowball as much as we possibly can. But I think our ordinances and those kind of things are robust. If we're talking any way, I would rather go into something that limits it more, as the mayor has proposed in option two. But then we've got to step up and enforce that instead of continually accepting, we've got this now. We've made it better, we've made it stronger. But we're still going to sit in honor PUDs, CUPs, all the other acronyms you can think of. That absolutely drives me nuts. So I've spoken enough. Our big thing here, and again, I'm all about the residents. I'm all about this great rural city. It's going to change. It's going to involve, it's going to take a number of years. But I dislike the mindset, not in our neighborhood, not in those things. We've got ordinances and those kind of things to take care of some of this stuff. Again, it's a sour note. This monstrosity of a building, this paved parking lot of a place that was going to come in and not be much of a community member, I felt, too, of coming in and not being available for community meetings or being available for a voting place or be available to add some play areas, those kind of things. It was turning into, it sounded like almost a preserve in my mind. And then on top of all of those things, we've got to think of transportation, all those things. We've got to fix a lot of these roads and such, any way we can. From the community I was at before, there was a huge resource, and that was because of all of the development and stuff that could go on. The city could finance the widening of County Road 10, the changing of 101, all of those things. And I still believe that the county owes that city money from all of stoplights and everything that was put in by the city and the tax base that was pulled from that point. So I've jumped all over the place. Thank you for the time. But I really don't like that mindset of not in my backyard. I didn't move here to see more homes built. I moved here to see the country. And what I've said in the past, from where I'm from, if you want to see country, I'm sure if you give that farmer the same amount of amenity that the developer's going to give you or give him, he'd be happy to farm it for nothing and maintain it to keep it country. But it is just an exorbitant amount of money that these landowners and such are getting. I do not think they were people that invested their money. I think they've turned into, hey, I invested my money now, and I'm going to get it back. But I'm guessing we're going to have a couple of neighbors, a couple of farmers, that are going to say, I'm going to keep plowing it and planting it and raising cows, raising whatever animals. I think that's what's going to happen. So I think our mindset's got to turn around that if somebody wants to develop, if it's a good plan, if it's within our ordinances, it would be nice to do it that way and not keep opening up everything for a PUD or a conditional use permit. That's my, I'm off my soapbox now. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Varancamp, just then answer this for me real quickly. Do you have a preference, option one or option two? Or do you want an option three?
I brought in option three.
Okay, so where are you at right now?
With the way that people were talking and the things that we're saying, I think we've got to grow up in, I think, a tighter ordinance and more, not constricted, but more controlled. It would be nice if we could put a timeline to see a little bit more detail around that steps on size of property, setbacks, building height, those kind of things. While it was in here, when would this come back to, or when would this go to the council? Is it the next council meeting? Or is there time that's needed to really put that together and stage it? Or is the information we have enough as far as all of that stuff? We can sit here and debate it all night. That a five-acre lot gets this size of building, and the setback is this, and the height is this. I know Mayor McGee spent a lot of time on it. Is there enough information that it would go to the council with a decent proposal that has meat into it that says, if you're going to do this, we aren't going to look kindly on PUDs, CUPs, and all of these things?
All right, so again, are you on option one?
Two more.
Option two?
If I could just chime in, I don't think it's appropriate to ask members how they're going to vote until the discussion period is over. Because I want to hear what everyone has to say.
Yeah, that's a good way to do it, too.
My mind, just respectfully.
It was a recommendation made that maybe can steer our discussion and questions?
As Mr. Manchin just said, I think it's still part of our public, it's still part of our public hearing. Even though we've closed it, it's us to talk, and then everybody talks, and now what are we going to do? Which way are we going to go? Are we going to talk one, two, or three?
Well, so...
I think it's a good idea.
All right, so Commissioner Varancamp, can we move on to...
I'm all done.
Okay. Commissioner Schalack, how do you feel about the issue?
I have really, really gone all around with this in an effort of full disclosure. I'm an ordained minister. And I don't believe that churches, places of worship, schools should be, should have greater hoops to jump through or bigger impediments placed on them just because of what they are. I can also see the point of a church wanting or needing to be near adequate sanitation utilities rather than to have its congregation on a septic system. And the more and more that I've gone over this, I have to, I don't like this, this position that I'm going to take. But for me, it's too much of a conflict of interest at this point for me to speak out about something of this nature. So I have to refrain from voting on it.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Lankman.
Thank you. So this agenda item hits on fundamental constitutional rights, and I think it's a real doozy. And that's why I am very surprised and disappointed by the lack of a written opinion from the city attorney as to whether both options meet the legal standard of strict scrutiny or even whether a third option exists, as raised by my colleague here. So basically, this is about how to deal with where places of worship can be built, and specifically if they can be built in residential zoning districts. Under federal law, because of the right to religious freedom, you cannot specifically limit churches. They are allowed wherever other institutions are permitted, such as schools. Essentially, to survive judicial review, a law that limits religious freedom must pass strict scrutiny, as we saw in the slide. And that is where any regulations imposed on religious uses must serve a compelling government interest, and these regulations must be the least restrictive means to advance that interest. So with that said, first, I did see something in the report. And yes, I do agree that changing the heading of the definition should be done, though I don't believe that definition titles have the effect of law. And I do believe that wherever the code can be made clear, I am all for it. Now, staff has proposed two options, my colleague a third. But the first option is essentially remove churches. And to avoid a constitutional challenge, we're also going to remove assembly uses, schools, from the residential zoning districts. Or option two, permit churches and schools in residential districts, but impose strict conditions. Now, I prefer option number one simply due to the ease of administration, as staff has already mentioned here. But I do believe that either option is acceptable. And, you know, I do look forward to hearing from my other two colleagues and their points of view. But the law should be clear. And I think it is much clearer and predictable to say churches and other assembly uses are permitted in GMU, industrial zones, or wherever else. It is much more complicated to say or to have a law that says, quote, you know, "Assembly uses are okay anywhere, but if they're in a residential district, then we've got to deal with these eight different factors." So at the end of the day, I think that assembly places should be permitted in non-residential zones. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Wu?
I'm absolutely against option one. I just am. And I look at it from an urban design standpoint as an architect. I feel that if I just look at urban planning and the diversity that we try and get in neighborhoods, I think removing such important cultural institutions, such as schools and churches, and don't even get me started on group homes, because they do have a place in the residential district. So for me, when you remove those cultural icons from the urban fabric, you are, in a way, going back to some of the 1950s design of very, very much limiting the residential landscape to be houses only and really relying more on the automobile, which I know we do. But you are furthering that aspect by removing these cultural institutions from the neighborhood. I think that performance standards are appropriate here. They're appropriate in all different parts of the ordinance. But they are appropriate here because we know that the sheer size of some of these institutions has grown to the point where they become incompatible with the district. And we've seen that happen. I think the performance standards, I can go through them and speak to some of them because I've designed to some of them in other jurisdictions. So I have that familiarity about whether 350 square feet of island, how does that look in a parking lot? I have a pretty good idea how that looks because I've had to design to it. But I can understand that if you haven't, you might be clueless as to, is it 350 or is it 500? Is it 120 or is it every 10 parking spaces? That's really hard to know. And is it burdensome or not? That's going to be a lot about the applicant who's applying. So I think that it's very difficult for us to make that measurement based on these numbers because a lot of it will be trial and error. If we start to get a lot of applicants saying, asking for variances or they're chafing under the conditional use permit process, then we know that the performance standards are overly burdensome. But if I were to go, and I can go through each one of them with thoughts, if that's what you want me to do. But I support option two. And I feel that there are some things that could be added to suggestions that I have that I would like to discuss further with other commissioners. But this is a huge undertaking. I also don't think, I don't think that there's a constitutional standpoint on removing group homes from a residential district. I just, I don't think you can do it. I can think of a couple lawsuits in the city of Minneapolis that have occurred where neighbors have stood up and said they don't want more group homes, they don't want more supportive housing, which is a different kind. I know that this is not supportive. And it hasn't passed, I mean, it's been struck down. So I, and I think just from my own standpoint, I think that group homes that take care of citizens should be in the neighborhood. They are a residential use. They should not be pushed to an industrial use, just like I don't think churches should be. But if you want me to go through with any suggestions that I have, I'm happy to do that, or wait, or not say them at all.
Why don't we just hold off on that?
Okay.
Meredith, thank you. So, you know, it's, I find it interesting that this has now come before us in this format, in this form, for an ordinance change because a 70,000-square-foot church was proposed. And I think we can all agree that, you know, had it not been the fact that it was 70,000 square feet, maybe we wouldn't be here talking about this today. What if it was an 8,000-square-foot church, and they had 550-foot setbacks? Would we be here today talking about it? I don't think so. And the 550 feet is what I calculated would be the setbacks for a 70,000-square-foot church under these ordinances. 250 feet or 200 feet plus the tiered, you'd have 550 feet of setback. And I wonder how that would change this discussion or would have changed the discussion back then. Which leads me to believe that there are possibilities, I think, for churches, schools, places of assembly to exist within residential zoned areas. We can look around, we see them all the place. Look at 101. They built a church right next, or they built a school right next to that brand-new neighborhood. We see churches all the time being built. Not 70,000-square-foot churches. But I don't find that these uses in any general residential area are incompatible. I think that they can be done. It's just that this was such an outlier. What was the percentage? A 70,000-square-foot church is less than 1% of all the churches in the country?
I don't recall, but it was...
Yeah, I mean, it was so low, it almost inconsequential. And I don't, I don't believe that going to an option one is necessary for most of what will be seen in the future. Now, if there is such a situation where somebody's just really, you know, bent on trying to build a 70,000-square-foot church, I would think that maybe, you know, with some of these, with some of these types of performance standards, that they might have to look for, you know, an industrial or a GMU lot. And with that came a question that I had about the I-1 district. On this, it says it's not allowed, but recommended to allow. Just wherever this conversation leaves this commission and goes to the city council, I don't know why we wouldn't allow those anyway in those zoning areas. And in the GMU. As an option, you know, for them. But so, we have now, as it stands, I'm going to say I'd be amenable to option two. And so in summary, again, just trying to move this discussion... And so in summary, again, just trying to move this discussion along. And I don't expect that we're going to get everything right here. I have no expectation that, that we're going to solve this whole issue this way, but we have three option twos, an option one and an abstain. So question to Brad and to Kendra. We, we, we're not going to all agree, this is not going to be a 5-0 vote, but for those that want to pursue option two, we can collectively as, as a whole commission or those in, in support of option two, can go through here real quickly or as much time as needed, I guess, to, to make recommendations for that, for the city council. For Commissioner Lanterman, for option one, I, I don't know if you have any other things that you would want to, to put down to the public record, but.
Sure. I will abstain from voting until I see a legal opinion from the city attorney as to not only the two options that are on the table, but also for the third option recommended by, by my colleague. So I will abstain.
Okay.
Mr. Chair, just so that, because I want to jump on a question that Commissioner Lanterman asked about process and timing and everything. So the tentative plan would be to get the discussion, I'd get a recommendation and go to city council on the 23rd of September. However, if there is, I need to know more about X, Y and Z before I'm comfortable, that's an option for the commission as well to table this item until more information is available. I'm not sure if the council would want it delayed and delayed, but I think getting a better answer might be beneficial, slowing it down versus pushing something through you're not comfortable with. You'll have to live with this, whatever it is, moving forward. So that's maybe an option number four is request more information before you finalize your decision potential, just to throw that.
Which would basically be say to table it.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
There was one more thing. You spoke eloquently on all of this. I'm going back to the neighborhood and Ravinia and such. The other thing that kind of caused the number, the considerable amount of this issue was the ghost plot of that corner of 101 and, and Hackmore and the expectations of, we thought that was going to be a neighborhood kind of deal and then the uproot 70,000 square foot buildings. So I, again, I left that out of what I was thinking, but when you started talking, there was a couple of things there, that size, and then again, that ghost plotting. So as, as we have Brad and Kendra here, it would be nice to not have that. It's been explained before that, that, that land could have been any of these things and such. And I know the folks at Lennar say, they tell people that you're living next to a piece of property that all of these things could be in, but when it's drawn and goes plotted for residential and such, that's an issue. It's kind of, it's a little bit of false advertising in my mind. So to talk to everyone in that Ravinia neighborhood and soon to be Trevinia and all of the people around it, it would be nice if we could refrain from those kind of things while I believe our, our development friends and such are sharing that information. Again, there's only so much people here and sign and read and such. So thanks again for a minute of time.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I do want to make, I think, kind of along the point and to Commissioner Lanterman about a legal opinion because I got to thinking that would, would it be, you know, in looking at the performance standards, would it be inappropriate that we set a standard on square footage or, you know, parishioner count? Would that be viewed as a limitation to a church that, I mean, if, let's just use the obvious, Eagle Brook, you know? They're online, they're in-house, they're centrally located, but they are expecting thousands of people. And if we said, "Well, you know, man, we don't allow churches over, you know, 500 parishioners."
Yeah, we can't.
You know, would that be, would that be illegal?
The city attorney absolutely has weighed in on that. We should not do that. We should not put a limit on number of parishioners, size of building or parking lot.
Which is why we should have that opinion in writing and available to us before we make a decision on such an important topic.
So just to the.
That's an excellent question. Thank you.
Just to the, so as far as the city attorney being involved, he's been heavily involved since end of last year. And if the city councilors want to share their comfort level of not having a written opinion, they were at all the meetings where they had open conversation back and forth with the city attorney. I can comfortably say that the city attorney, as stated in the front of the first page there, provided, was discussed with the city attorney and he's comfortable with either of these approaches. Now, if there's, how about if we tweak, I want to tweak, these are.
But that's not consistent with what was just said. She said that there was not an opinion on option one, but that he did give us an opinion on option two.
Written. Now, option one was discussed at the city council with the city attorney present on video recorded with a significant back and forth.
Okay. All right.
So that's where that, that was.
That's June 24th, if you wanted to go back and review it.
Okay. And do we have a written opinion on option two? Is that what I understood you to just say?
So we have an opinion from October of last year that was written in the packet.
Okay.
And then, which went on for performance standards. And then Councilmember Nichols came forth with option one and there was a really significant council discussion back and forth with the city attorney that was never put in a legal memo per se. And then, so we had two, I want to call them competing, two options to improve the city code. And that's where they've been discussed behind the scenes with the city attorney back and forth. And until the commission really has a strong direction for this, then we draft the final ordinance language to come to city council, which would then again be reviewed by the city attorney. But if the commission says, "No, I want a written opinion based upon these exact items," we can, we can take that back and get that for the commission. But at the staff level, we're comfortable because of those previous discussions taking place. But if you're not, you weren't there. So if you need to get there, that's completely up to you.
And, and the main reason why I'm pushing on this is because I, I agree with the chair. It's going to be hard for us to get this right and this is something that we have to get right and at least in my opinion. And it would give me greater comfort to know if I have a written legal opinion saying, "I, the city attorney, I have reviewed option one, here's my comfort level. Option two with these conditions, I'm okay with both. Is there a preference? Is one less risky than the other?" You know, I would like to, I would like to hear some of that.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, sir.
While I am not the city attorney, I did speak with him. And I can, in my review in preparation for today, I did go back and re-listen to his discussion on the 24th. And then there he, he spoke to both option one and essentially something similar with the mayor presented.
It was what?
As his scaling setback version, although not with any specific level of, you know, this is the size that is triggered and this is the rate at which setbacks. But the, the general concept of a setback that varies depending upon the usage intensity. And his stated preference was a scaling setback was the lowest risk because the burden varies with the intensity of the use. So if you have a small intensity of use with a smaller facility, you don't impose a strict of a burden. If you've got a larger intensity of use with a larger area being affected, more traffic, you would have at some level a greater setback or a greater level of control, but it's only applied where it's necessary, not uniformly across the board.
And my, my performance standards were essentially initially drafted based on the feedback we got from the city attorney at the 24th.
The 24th, yeah.
At that meeting.